عُلَّمِ اللَّهُ مِنَ الشَّيْطَانِ الرَّجُونِ بِسِنِ اللَّهِ الرَّحْمٰنَ الرَّحِيمِ إِنَّ الَّذِينَ قَالُوا: رَبُّنَا الْضَّالَكَ ثُمَّ أَسْتَغَدَنَّ اتَّدَنَّا الْثَمُعَيِّمُ الْمَلَائِكَةُ تَتَنَسَّمُ عَنِيْمُ الْمَلَائِكَةُ أَلَّا تَغَافُوا وَلا تَعْحْزَنُوا وَأَبَشِرُوا بِالجَنَّةِ الَّتِي مُنْتُمْتُ عَيْدُوْنِ نَحْنُ أَوْمِيَاءُكُمْ فِي الْحَيَاةِ الدُّنْيَا وَفِي النَّاَخِرَةِ وَلَكُمْ فِيهَا مَا تَشْتَهِيْ أَنْتُسُكُمْ وَلَكُمْ فِيهَا مَا تَبْتَعُونُ نُفُلًا مِنْ وَفُورِ الرَّحِيمِ وَمَنْ أَحْسَنَ قَوْلًا مِنَ مَنْ دَعَى إِلَى اللَّهِ وَمَنْ أَحْسَنَ قَوْلًا مِنَ مَنْ دَعَى إِلَى اللَّهِ يُعَمِّيَ صَامِحًا وَقَالٌ وَقَالَ: إِنَّنِي مِنَ الْمُسْلِمُونَ وَلا تَستَغِيلْ حَسَنَةً وَلا السَّيِئَةً إِذْ تَعْبِiَ الَّتِي يَاحْسَن فَإِذَا الَّتِي بَيْنَكَ وَبَيْنَهُ عَلَىٰ أَوَّتٍ كَأَنَّهُ وَهِيُ حَمِيمٌ وَمَا يُلَطَّاهَا إِلَّا الَّذِينَ صَبَبُوا وَمَا يُلَطَّاهَا إِلَّا رُحْمَةٌ عَظِيمٌ
اللَّهُ الْحَمَلُ الْحَمَلِ لَوْ وَهُوْاُ الْكُلُّ مِنَ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ اللَّهُ وَأَحْفَظُوا أَنْ يَعْمِلُوا الْمَنْ أَعْمِلُ الْمَنْ يَعْمِلُ فَهَنَا فِي الْمَوْضَّةِ وَهِنَا فِي الْمَوْضَّةِ الْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمَسْكِنَةِ وَنَعَمُوا مِنْ الْمَسْكِنَةِ 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 وَهُنَا فِي الْمَسْكِنَةِ 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 وَإِنَّهُمْ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ 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 وَمَنْ يَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ وَيَعْمِلُونَ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ 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 وَمَنْ يَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ فَيَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ وَمَنْ يَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ وَمَنْ يَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ وَمَنْ يَحْتَفَظُ مِنْ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ الْمُسْلِمَاتِ
عُلَّمِ اللَّهُ مِنَ الشَّيْطَانِ الرَّجُونِ سِيرَةَ التَّكْشُرِ الْمَعَاهِدِ وَالْمَحْرَسُونَ سَرَطَةَ اللَّهِ وَالْمُسْرِكُونَ السَّلَاتُ وَالسَّلَامُ وَمَعَهُ الْمَحْرَسُونَ وَالْحَرَامُ الْحَرَامُ وَالْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمُسْرِكُونَ وَالْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمُسْرِكُونَ وَالْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمُسْرِكُونَ السلام و بارك الله وَلاَ تَنْفَسْ عَلَى الْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمُسْرِكُونَ حَمَلُ اللَّهِ نحن نبدأ بالبداية كما قال قبل قليل لَا يَشْتُلُ اللَّهُ وَلَا يَشْتُلُ النَّاسُ أي شخص لا يهتم بالأشخاص نحن نشكرنا على الأهل نريد أن نشكر السِّبَادِ الْيَادِ وَالْمُسْكِنَةِ الْمَسْكِنَةِ نريد أن نشكر بالفعل مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ لِمَنْ أسمَنَنا على هذه المَسْكِنَةِ بعضكم منكم يعرفون أنني أحب هذا الماسجد أنا أحب أن أكون على هذا المسرح وآخذ الأشياء أريد أن أقول بعض الأشياء عن المُسْكِنَةِ الْمَسْكِنَةِ أول شيء مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ الْمَسْكِنَةِ سنحاول أن نصلي عليه آخر شيء سترى هو التسجيل نحن نطلب منك التسجيل لا تضع اسمك نطلب منك أن تفعل ذلك نحاول أن نحصل على المُسْجلي نحن أيضاً نطلب منك أن تكون مُسْرَكٌ من مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ هو خارج المسرح يبيع بعض الكتب ونقوم بعمل مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ ثم نقوم بعمل التسجيل هم المُسْجلي الالكتروني و شاء الله ما هو مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ؟ نريد أن نبدأ ببعض الأشياء الأساسية لكي نكون واضحين أحياناً نستخدم هذه الكلمات العربية ولا نعرف حتى ما يعنيه نريد فقط أن نعطي بعض المعلومات الأساسية أو نوعاً ما مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ هو basically من الذين ي嫉妒ون 嫉妒 يعني الجلوس عند جلوسك تذهب إلى مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ وهو مكان للجلوس مثلما تقول في المثال هو مكان للجلوس عند جلوسك وهو مكان للجلوس لديك كتابة مفتدة ونقول مكتبة ثم عند جلوسك مثلما تقول مكتبة سيكون هذا مكتب أو مكتبة مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ هو مكان للجلوس بعض الناس يقولون أن هذا اجتماع أو مؤتمر أحياناً يمكننا أيضًا التحديات مثل مسجد المَسْكِنَةِ أو شيء من هذا القبيل ثم لديك مسجد مسجد 基本上 تعني استشارة عند وضع الكلماتتين مع بعضها ولكن مسجد مسجد هو مثل الترجمة المُفرطة الاستشارة هذا هو الترجمة العادية التي أقولها أنا ليس مترجم لا أعرف كيف تترجم الناس مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ إنه مفهوم بسيط استشارة هل تعرف ما هو مفهوم و شهدناه من قبل للاستجابة على الأهمية ونستشارة في كل شيء من المُستوى هذا جزء من المَسْكِنَةِ إنه مفهوم بسيط لدينا بعض الناس الذين بدأوا في هذا الماسجد هذا ماسجد محدد لذا تذكر أن هناك مئات أو آلاف مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ في جميع أنحاء العالم ولكن في منطقة الدلورا لدينا بعض الناس الذين بدأوا المُسجدين الذين بدأوا وأقل منهم هنا بدأ في 1990 وكان الفكرة بسيطة جدا لا أحد أو اثنين أو ثلاثة يمكن أن يتحدث على behalf (أجل) من جميع الأشخاص في منطقة الدلورا منطقة الغرب على behalf (أجل) من جميع الأشخاص بدون استشارة للقيادة لا يمكنك فعل ذلك ثم لدينا مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ لدينا بعض الناس هنا رجل كان في القسم الأول كان أول مسجداء أو رئيس مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ لفترة طويلة ثم بالطبع لدينا إمام أسم أبو مشي الذي قد passed away تقريباً بعد عامين 29 من هذا العام كان له أكثر من عامين ثم إمام فارين ناسو الذي كان رئيس مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ في السنواتتين الماضية نريد أن نتوقف ونشكر هؤلاء الأصدقاء بما في ذلك إمام فارين الذي أتمنى أن يجلب هذا الأمر من 1990 إلى 2024 نقدر ذلك إنه مؤسسة قد لا يكون بيتاً لكنه مؤسسة نحن لدينا ونحن نحتاج إلى أن نستمر في إنجازه بعض الأشياء هذه هي نظرة عامتنا في 2023 هناك الكثير من الأشياء المختلفة مع مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ هذه ليست في順序 لذا لن نتحدث عن المُسجد أولاً، نحن قمنا بتحذير مدونة الالكتروني نريد أن نقوم بعمل مدونة الالكتروني مرة أخرى، إذا كان هناك أشخاص قبل أن تأتي إذا كان لديك تسجيل ضغط email وسنقوم بعمل ذلك ثانية، هذه ليست في順序 لدينا مسجد إسلامي أو ماذا أقول مسجد التعليم كان لديه مدرسة إسلامية وكان ذلك في نهاية أيلاس في وقت ما كان هناك مدرسة إسلامية هذا كان ما كان عليه وكان مناسب جدا في بعض الأسباب المُسجدون يمكنهم التحدث عن ذلك آخر شيء كان بالطبع نحن قمنا بعمل مدونة في محارس الشيطان كنا نذهب إلى الحفل نحن أيضاً لدينا مسجد إسلامي ونقدرون المُسجدين والأساتذة الفكرة behind (الغرض) behind (الغرض) هذا هي أن نعطي بعض الأشياء للمدرسة الإسلامية الناس كانوا مسجدين أو ماذا يعنيه بعض المعلومات للذهاب بالطبع يمكننا دائمًا أن نقوم بعمل ذلك نحو أطفالك أو أشخاصك ما ترى به أفضل لنقل المعلومات كل المُستويات تذهب نحو مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ 通常会卖12.95 通常会卖12.95 كما تعلمون نحن نملكه هنا تذكر فارين قام بعمل 10 دولار كان هناك مال و everything ثم نريد أن نقول لجيري ما يمكننا التحدث عنه هذه هي بعض الأشياء أنا لا أريد أن أذكر الأشياء الرئيسية بالنسبة لي وهي التسجيل بشكل مستمر لقد بدأ منذ 30 سنوات من التسجيل بشكل مستمر نحن نريد أن نحصل على هذا لن أذكر بعض الأصدقاء هنا لدينا من على اليمين إمام فليل مسجد جاكيد الجميع يقول 6 سنوات مسجد جاكيد من على الأفضل لدينا إمام فارين ناسو مسجد أسabi قوم أربع أصدقاء وهو رئيس مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ نحن لدينا إمام سنتودين محمد الذي هو إمام مسجد محمد ثم نحن لدينا دكتور ليا شولز يمثل عائلة شولز كبيرة ثم بالطبع مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ لدينا جيري وولو في مسجد إيشا مسجد محمد نحن جيري وولو ثم بالطبع نحن لدينا يوسو ودينا إمام سنتودين الذي كان مسجد طار مرة أخرى، هذه هي بعض الملاحظات أقولها من مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ نحن أيضاً واحد من المُسْجدين لمسجد الخارقة هذا واحد فقط حدث في أريد أن أقول في أيلاس هذا العام في فنيكسبل في مسجد هذه هي بعض الأشياء وسأقوم بعمل هذا
السلام أنا أقول أنني لم أكن أعلم أنا أشكركم على الذهاب لمن كان يرغب في ذلك لقد قلت إذا لم تكن تشكر أي منكم فلا يجب أن تشكر الله نحن نشكركم على القدوم والانضمام وفي نفس الوقت أنتم تساعدون وانضماموا إلى هذا المسرح إن كان من المفترض أن نفعل ذلك في مجتمع ولهذا أحد الأشياء التي أحب أن أقرأها هنا هو قصي 15 في حرامي وَمَا يَنْتَدَّيْنَ الْكُلُّ الْمُسْتَرَبِينَ الْمُسْتَرَبِينَ وَالْمُسْتَرَبِينَ وَالْمُسْتَرَبِينَ فَإِنَّهُمْ يَنْتَدَّيْنَ مَنْ يَعْمِلُونَ مَنْ يَعْمِلُونَ عندما كان مسجد كان نحن نرى أننا كثيرون في المدينة كثيرون في المدينة لكننا لم نكن في نفس المسرح لذا جاءت الأطراف في ذلك الوقت وقالوا لم نكن نريد أن يحدث لم نكن نريد أن نكون في نفس المسرح ونأتي في الطريقة التي تجمعها لأننا نجد أن الكثير من مسجدنا يحاولون أن يصلون إلى بعضهم البعض يريدون أن يفعلون ما يفعلونه نحن نحاول أن نصل إلى بعضهم البعض بدلاً من أن نأتي ونصل إلى بعضهم البعض لذا قصي حرامي قال من هو المُدفوع من النار وانتم مُدفوعون في ذلك الوقت كان مسجد كان نحن حقاً كنا نريد أن نكون كنا نريد أن نكون مُدفوعين بعضهم البعض لذا كان هناك حاول حقيقي لجمعنا على الرغم من أنفسنا وناولنا وذلنا إلى بعضهم البعض من أجل أن نصل إلى بعضنا البعض ونأتي إلى هذا المسرح ونرى أن بعضنا البعض يأتون والأطراف في ذلك الوقت الأطراف الكبيرة التي طلبت منهم أن يأتوا لكي يصبحوا أفراداً لكي يصبحوا أفراداً وينجذبوا إلى أن يكونوا أحداً يخدمون الناس هو شخص يمكن أن يحمل وينجذب ونشكره لأنه دخلنا في هذا المسرح اليوم نريد حقاً أن نقدم لكم ما نقوم به ما نحاول القيام به ما نحاول القيام به ما نفكر فيه ما نريد القيام به وأيضًا كما قلت بعض الأشياء التي فعلناها في过程当中 ونقوم بعمل ذلك وفي نفس الوقت نرى أن هناك حاجة كبيرة للاستجابة للاستجابة لأننا نقوم بعمل خطوات كبيرة في وقت ما لمساعدتنا لأننا نقوم سواء كانوا يضموننا أو لا إذا جاء شخص من قطعنا لا نبدأ بالتشتت أن هذا الماسجد جزء منه إذا كان من الضروري أن يكون من الضروري الأشياء التي نعمل عليها هي من الضروري الشيء الوحيد الذي يحدث هو أنهم يأتوا إلى هذا الماسجد لأنهم أعتقد أنهم كانوا في حوض الارض وهم يريدون أن يذهبوا ضد شراط و someone (شخص) كان على التلفزيون وقالوا أنهم كانوا يمثلون جميع المسلمين و agreed (توافقوا) أن المسلمين جميعهم agreed (توافقوا) أنه من الممكن أن يكون هناك حرب من قسم ضد شراط وجميع المسلمين كانوا يعتقدون أن هذا كان من أوجهنا أنه من الممكن أن يكون هناك حرب من قسم لكنك لا تعلم أنك تريد أن تقتل بعض الناس ونقول أنك تريد أن تقترب وفي过程当中 عندما تقتل بعض الناس أو بعض المسلمين نحن لم نتفق لذا في النتيجة من ذلك هذا كان جزءاً من الاتصال لأن هذا كان شيء جداً 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 شخص ما يقول أنك تملك حرب من قسم ونقول أنه من الممكن أن تقتل some Muslims ولكننا نتفق لذا كان الماسجد يقرر أننا سنكون في مكان للاتصال لكي تسمع ما تقرر وalso (أيضًا) يمكنك التحدث مع الآخرين لكي عندما كان يقرر أن يقترب من المسلمين ثم كان يطلب أن يمثلنا من قبل الآن نحن نرى أننا نحن كثيرون ونحن كثيرون كثيرون أكثر كثيرون أكثر من قبل وفي نفس الوقت لدينا نفس الأشخاص الجميع يحاول أن يخرجون الجميع يحاول أن يظهر الجميع يقول انظر إلى عينك عينك مثل القو انظر إلى عينك عينك مثل دايل في أي حال أي شيء يمكنهم أن يقولون انظر إلىنا هنا ونقول أن هذا جزء من من الطريقة التي نقدمها من الطريقة التي نقدمها نحن نحاول أن نخرج بعضنا البعض بدلاً من أن نأتوا ونعمل معًا نحن لدينا الكثير من الأشياء الجميع يفعلون ما يفعلونه ولكن عندما يأتون إلى شيء ما إنهم مسلمون إذا اتتت المسلمين لا نملك أي شيء في وجه الوراء كان من المفروض أن يهتم مما يعني أنه إذا كان نحن نجتمع مع بعضنا البعض هذا هو فشل في حقيقةنا نحن ننظر إلى ذلك نجد دائمًا نجد عندما يحدث شيء لمسجد نرد على ذلك نجد عندما يحدث شيء لمسلم نرد على ذلك ونقول أننا نأتي من مجتمعنا ونساعد مجتمعنا لكنه بعد الحقيقة وليس قبل الحقيقة نحن نحاول أن نجتمع بذلنا ننصح جميع المجتمعين ونكون مُؤمنين ونضع قيادة في هذا السؤال نسألهم لماذا تشاركوا في ذلك ونتحدث عن ما لدينا وفي نفس الوقت نحن نكون نطرح السؤال لأننا ننظر إلى ذلك نحن هنا لذلك نطرح السؤال هذا هو السبب في أن الماسجد مفتوح الماسجد يجري في كل شهر ينتقل إلى مسجد مختلف يجري ويتم استشارة في 7 مع open choir في 33 في كل مرة أي سؤال تواجهنا أي مشكلة أي مساعدة أو مساعدة سنحصل على ذلك نحن دائماً إن شاء الله نقوم بعمل هذا بعمل الاعتراف من العمل مع بعضنا البعض لقد قلنا ثلاث سنوات لقد قلنا ثلاث سنوات في العام لذا مسجدك ونجد ما يحدث وفي نفس الوقت سنرى ما يحدث وما يحدث بيننا إن شاء الله سنستمر في العمل سنكون أكثر أشخاص سنكون أكثر أشخاص يأتون من نفس الذل لذا إن شاء الله لا نريد أن ننتظر حتى أن يجبرنا أن نجتمع نريد أن نقول أننا جمعنا لأننا ن擔心 أننا جبرنا وانتم الله لم تكن قد تجربت ذلك أو تجربت ذلك نشكرك على الدعم نشكرك على القدوم إن شاء الله ننظر إلى ذلك السلام
فقط لأقول بعض الأشياء عن我自己 ورئيسي مسجد الْمَسْكِنَةِ تذكر فارين طلبني قبل عامين لمساعدة الاجتماعات الاجتماعات العامة في كل شهر طلبني المساعدة في جعل ذلك الاجتماع هذا هو ما بدأت في أفعله أنا أيضاً أدير موقع الويب فليمسجد أعلم أنك تعرف وأساعد بعض الأشياء الأخرى نوع من الأشياء فقط أريد أن أقول ذلك أيضاً لكي ننجز ما قاله إمامه حول المُسجدات هناك الكثير من الأشياء المُسجدات هي مهمة جداً لأنهم يعودون ويريدون أن يقدمون الأشياء إلى المُسجدون لكي ينصحوا بشيء ما أو لا ينصحوا لكن المُسجدات 这是我们 всегда نستخدم الدعم من المُسجدات لمساعدتنا بالطبع الآن سأقوم بعمل ذلك لدكتور ليا شولز
سأقول سأقول لأي شخص سألني إذا كنت تذهب إلى الكالة في وقت طويل هذا هو بشكل كبير حرفياً أيضاً إنه حرفياً أنا كنت أكتب أنا كنت أقول لا شيء سيء أو سيئ لذا لا تقلق لا تقلق أنا أيضاً سأقول أنت لا تطلب لا تطلب حساب الماسجد هم يضعون الماسجد يضعونه على مسجد يتأكدوا من أنه مناسب مريح لا ينصح ليس من الضروري هذا هو جزء آخر لماذا نجتمع لكي لا ينتهي الجميع لأنهم لا ينصحون يجتمعون ونعمل مع بعضهم البعض نريد أن نطلب من الآخرين نريد أن يزيد نحن نتذكر سورة تذكر شهاد هذا هو قال إذا كان الله يعترف سورة إذا كان الناس مرتاحون يمكنهم الحصول على رياضية أنا لم أكن أقول ذلك لذا رياضية في اللغة الإنجليزية ونحن نقول أنت لا تذهب إلى وقت أو في ذلك الساعة أو في ذلك الساعة نقول في وقت نفكر في وقت لذا كل شهر نقول هذا هو هناك مُدفوعين أنت تفكر شخص ما يقول في اللغة الإنجليزية يقولون إذا كنت تقول أنك مُدفوع لكن الناس يفكرون في المُدفوع إذا كنت مُدفوعاً تحتاج إلى دعوة إلى الاتجاه في هذا يمكنك النظر إلى الناس الذين قرروا أنهم مُدفوعين يمكنهم أن يكونوا مُدفوعين لكن الناس الذين يعلمون أنهم مُدفوعين يمكنهم أن يسألون أو يسألون شخص ما يعرف عندما ينصح أن يعود إلى المُدفوع لديك هؤلاء لا يعرفون أنهم مُدفوعين هؤلاء هم مُدفوعين أيضاً لذا كان المسلمين عملت بشكل كبير قبل أن أقول كان المسلمين عملت بشكل كبير لكن المُدفوع قال هؤلاء الذين اخترعوا إلى الاتجاه قبل أن يأتوا إلى الأرض اخترعوا إلى الاتجاه و قالوا أنهم سيأتون هنا كأخوات أتفقوا نتفقنا نقول أننا سنأتون هنا لم نكن نحن نركب لم نكن نحن نركب لم نكن نرى أشخاص من قسم أننا سنقوم بعمل أ干净 سنقوم بعمل أكياس أتفقتم هذا يعني أنكم جميعاً تتفقوا وتفقوا في القيام بذلك لا ن分离 أنا أقول لك نقول أذهب إلى together لا تذهب شانغون يسألون كيف تقولون يخدمون هذا الأخوات يتحملون هذه المسؤولية 这不是白费当我们谈到 إلنا نادينا 他们说 except for those who have faith 有很多的翻译有些人说它是信仰与法律有些人说你不能有信仰与法律你必须有你自己你可以快速达成目标这是证明他们说你可以做我可以做这个但你的心里害怕所以你怎么可以做这没有意义所以你有信仰 إننا نادينا 那些有信仰的人他们有信仰于自己有信仰于法律去做我们好的道德你的看这个因为法律创造的已经被创造星星为什么照亮月亮为什么照亮太阳为什么照亮 When do the sun ever need the water for light? When do the birds ever need the seeds that they eat and scatter somewhere so you can have more trees? When they ever need, when do the bees ever need the powder, the honey, they take the ball? They eat so little of it, but create two bunches of brothers. But humans, we believe that we're here to do something for ourselves. So how Allah said in the Quran, that His Suda will not change. His Suda will change. And He prayed the whole universe would be like this, but we believe that we're here to do something. The stars, if they like it here, the moon, if it's like it where, then come on. This is the symbiotic relationship, meaning that we all work together in order to achieve the goal of our mission. Here you got it. And we don't wanna say that, that you can go for love, but you gotta keep. I'm almost done. Saying give us some comments, you know, for Magisterians. I'm almost done. I'm not even finished talking. So when we get through to the Inna, Dina, Amma, Musalliyat, we mix it, those who have faith, and they're doing the good and righteous deeds, and we're going together, lost on the sun. It makes us happy, it makes us support, it makes us the truth, and it makes us patient. So if you're engaged in the mystery of finding truth, you can't do all of Musalliyat if it's not true. If it's not hot, if it's not, if you're not patient about it, you can't join together in brotherhood, sisterhood, if you're not patient with one another. And I mix all this for a reason, in the clues, but yes. He has a doctor, an email, email, a fellow Magister, doctor, to get on the mic and not break his sound. Now, I'm ending here, that all this is for a reason. Because that old way is done. You can't feel it, just sleep some more. It's done, it's a new day. And remember the Prophet of Allah said, "A lot of urgent footsteps in Jannah before my, I'm right here." And I'm just coming in, what you be doing? Now, what do you fight for that? Now, what kind of relationship did the Prophet of Allah, or maybe someone, have with Allah? That he recognized his footsteps? This is the whole thing, that he recognized his footsteps? What kind of relationship you had to have with your brother? That you recognize some of his characteristics, whatever you seen him, through you to meet some of your senses? But every time somebody is delayed, don't fulfill their obligation, you say, "Brother, you ain't fulfill your obligation." Where was you? Where you been? Then you reach out to the brother, go by his room, and see if he's gay. See if it's time for your ass. See if he's rapping, his wife right here, because he ain't having enough money to pay himself, or a good call about it, and he hasn't been here, because he woke up like that. Let's dig into some real reality, that every single human being has a reality. And if you're not concerned with their reality, and within well-being, then you're not concerned with them all. So may Allah make peace for us. And may Allah join our hearts back together. In forgiveness, in peace, in love, in patience, in these states that surround Jannah, that it takes to get in there. And if you talk about fear, hate, disruption, confusion, those states surround hellfire. So may Allah protect us all. And may Allah give us righteous advice, not only will we be, so the land of the souls.
I'm gonna, sure, I'm gonna. Can you do me a, sir, Jwet? Come here, brother. I wanna make sure everybody has a pen to and an iPad, please, I'm almost on the bottom of my head. Can you make sure everybody has a pen to, just take the leg. My second is, Jwet, Mr. D, Hamburri, and Wep. And so, Hamburri, La. So now we're gonna open it up for any kind of comments, questions. Again, we have some of the committee ads, all the committee ads are here. Uh, Sister Fatima wasn't able to, she may be late, but may not be able to make it, in class, teaching classes. Uh, we have Brother Afy, who has the Economic Development Committee. She's from Sisters City, excuse me, far aside of that. And then, Brother Afy may have the Economic Development Committee. Uh, so he may be a little, definitely run a little late, insha Allah, in other part here. And so, any questions, comments? And we have, we have Jerick Lee Committee, we have Sucha Dean from Civic Engagement Committee. We have Nusul from the Dawal Committee. Again, I said earlier, with Dr. Leo from the Education Committee. Yes, we have Ryan, Brother Bean, of course, from the Islamic Pastoral Character Committee. And the Moon Society as well. So any questions, comments, corrections? Somebody wanna write it down? We'll get somebody, maybe this is a, he should get it. Somebody wanna write it down? All, all of you, please.
First, first of all, I already thank the brothers for, uh, for the welcome that they take. Much, much, to show the necessity for, to, to, to bring the Muslims to this, and, and, and serve education. First of all, if, uh, if there was no Magisterian around, I wouldn't have, uh, I, 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 if, 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 if there was no Magisterian for me, to have, to hang out with the Muslims and do my prayers, I would have come back, I would have come back to my country. However, my good brother, since, since Magister, Magister Shura exists, and I, I believe that Magister Shura, Shurat, God, Magister Shura, the apostle.
Say again?
My name is Jamal.
Jamal, okay. No, that's a good point. Uh, I actually was helping out with doing that. So it's a good suggestion, but actually already started. And so the difficulty is, we can just keep moving to the wheels fall off. But just so everyone would know, many of the, and I can't say everyone, it's like going to open up like pretty often. In Philadelphia, you can talk about Chester, you're talking about South Jersey, of course from South Jersey, all on double down. It is hard organizing. So you have to keep trying, to your point. But sometimes it just, sometimes people are looking for like a big shit to be there, or they're looking for money. That's just like my experience talking to immigrants and kind of people in reference to the Magenesis Shor. Then there is, there is a legitimate racial issue that we can't act like doesn't exist. And so it's not just black and African or black and uh, non-black and uh, who are uh, Indo-Pakistan and Bengali nations. It's not like this is all. And so there's, there's still even things, even saying West Africans and African Americans. There's still some things that are really like plague in this area, not just African Americans plague on. So it's, so we gotta keep trying, keep pushing, uh, but that has been emotional and actually still is emotional. So I appreciate that. Dr. Lewis? Is there a way, Dr. Lewis, is there a way you can help out as well with that? Are you interested? If you don't, that's fine.
Yeah, Jamal.
Jamal. That's something you will, okay, alright, I mean you're not, that's okay. It's just, it's, you can have a good suggestion, we have to do it.
I'm glad he asked.
Okay, how about, make sure we get clarification, you know, before we leave each other, then we kind of do the meeting. Brother Me and brother Aziz?
Asmaa wa alaikum wa alaikum wa alaikum wa alaikum. And I represent the moon side of the day. And what happens is that the day except for the project, we've decided in the lab of thirty-five years. Every day, every phase of the moon, eight phases of the month, every phase, every month of thirty-five years. What happens is that first of all, we depend on a lot of people, say, out there, who don't believe in us. We teach them very precisely that, the moon, the stars, the months. What happens is that the moon is here, it goes behind the clouds. The moon is here in North America before it is the thing we're nothing to worry about. About the Saudis, the Saudis don't need our word. No, Saudis times over to win, okay? The moon goes from here to go to the west, to go to California, to go to Hawaii, Japan, Singapore. Then the Saudi head, now the head, receives now every month for last thirty-seven, not precisely, before he arrives. And it was with the prayer of the seven days of God, just quietly receiving for all, for all my children, all my children. And we give all the creation, especially, and I'm going to talk about it any time. I'm going to be a class now. Oh my God.
My brother.
You know, if we're gonna go to the brothers?
No, it's a brother.
Yes, we can pass the message. And while brother Zayn is giving it to him, like, we, we don't want to overlook things like, you know, I love the brother.
Asmaa wa alaikum wa alaikum. Uh, the day was a beautiful, uh, action today, but the one thing I didn't hear, we have to come together. We need to concentrate. Then use our common sense, we need to remember the Boston to the home, take the vision in there, experience it. If we try coming together, on that day, y'all, that one, y'all are on the law, that may have been done. So we, I believe, but if we continue, on that day, she had more. Asmaa wa alaikum.
Alright, you see what I'm talking about.
Asmaa wa alaikum wa alaikum. On behalf of National Hospital in Man, um, the twenty-fifth came on the one hundredth quarter of the national hour, when we do this for thirty years at the hospital. And uh, all you men's, uh, rights that was going over the summer, you know, my name, uh, completely. I told him, I said, man, this is big back off of uh, New York City, man. Um, about communication and care for one another and checking on one another. I told him those posts today, I said, down, sit, go there, make it out in this car, this may circle around me, feel happy. And uh, so my check back, we may believe, now I am, now I am reached out, so much about, pretty well. He's recovering, he's better, going better. And um, someone else had a, uh, giving them a good five days, we can give you that nationally, it's coming back. But as you know, you men go around and give, uh, the good five, right, with the passion. So make sure, uh, stay in contact with the men to see how you want. So that work can continue getting done in some field that us, be sure, just point correct.
It's good advice.
Asmaa wa alaikum. Yeah, so what I'm saying is, uh, please, uh, go to the road. Uh, one of the things is, we had a meeting last week, and probably some of the strongest, like I told them that the June of five. And I was probably some of the biggest people that I settled in this country. Very important, some of the biggest men is there in this whole country, if not the world. And I sit here today, and I look out into this audience right here, this is the Magenesis Shor. Right? So this is, this ain't the Magenesis Shor out here. This is the Magenesis Shor that I'm looking out out there, right? That, you know, leadership lies within the resource community. And you all were here, uh, this afternoon. And one of the things that we agreed in the Magenesis Shor meeting last week is that the meeting will be opened up. The second part of the sisters' meeting. Like, we can't have a Magenesis Shor, we talk about mutual consultation, that's not just some EVs or some men or whatever, that's everybody, that's everybody in the community. And we can't do it without the sisters, and without their participation. And I'm glad that they said that meeting will be opened up, because I look out here, this is the Magenesis Shor meeting that I like to see. Not just myself here, kind of just four of us or whatever. I can see everybody out here in the group last week, the Tahit committee. And the men that was in that meeting, the men that was in that group, right? Magenesis Shor, Tahit committee, sisters over here, we, we gotta recognize what's going on here. Cause this guy right here, brother Jamal, he mentioned, right? Now, one member of my guys in this room, right? And I said, what, they didn't invite him, or this is a black meeting, or what? Right? The thing is, with, with the point of meeting, right, is that we have stripped ourselves, and we can begin to recognize that strength, right? Because the other brother came to our meeting last week, he said, you know, I'm sure I'll come down, we gotta start talking to politicians. You know, we gotta talk to senators, we gotta talk to the president, and all that kind of stuff, because what's going on in Gaza and everything. Yeah, like I said to him, I said, well, the thing, the problem is, right, is that if only he comes to us, we need us. Right? So many times when they come to African-American communities, when they need us to help them, can you right or left? Can you talk to the politicians? And so now, they recognize that our voice is strong enough, and that our people are strong enough, because if they didn't think that, they wouldn't come to you for your help. So we gotta start utilizing our own position, we gotta start utilizing our own strength. And we gotta recognize who we are, right? We gotta recognize who we are, and what we bring to this Muslim community. Everybody think the black people don't bring nothing to the Muslim community. Everybody look down on, because I said, where's the poor bastard? The poor bastard is right here, right, the poorest bastard in the world, so the poor bastard is here. There's nothing that didn't reach out to the rich bastards, and all other guys, the bastards, the gold, and all that, nothing that didn't reach out to them. The first thing I have to recognize, our own strength, and we have to recognize what we're doing here. Right? I'm glad we back in this building, we're home today. I sit up there in the balcony in nineteen seventy-six, right? We're home here today, and you should be glad and proud, and you're sitting right here in this bastion, in this building. And I see, really, with, don't cut the microphone. Uh, that's the Magenesis Shor stuff, right? So team, there's Shams, there's D, sitting out there, like, we're home today, man. We gotta stop playing these games. All of us gotta come back together, we gotta bring our community back together. We can't school them, we can't school these young people, we need all of you on deck, right? Because we in trouble right now. We in trouble, another thing, we recognize that, they come to us all the time, but they need our help, we need our own help. And we need to start helping one another, we need to start coming together, so I'm glad, right? I'm glad we had the audience, I see there's Shams again, I see brothers from Root, I mean, I see brothers that are there, brothers Brian, all the brothers come in. We gotta get this thing back together. We can't play these games all the time, and we need sisters on deck, no need them hiding behind a curtain, I mean, all that kind of stuff. We need to voice, we need to input, we need to help, right? So we need you all to be on deck, and they, they there to breathe that we will open up the meeting, we start having sisters in that meeting, we need sisters to be here. That's all I wanted to say, right? I was sitting here, thank, I see the whole Magenesis Shor right here, this is the Magenesis Shor. You know, we can't do it without Jamal. We can play games all day long, and think we're gonna get this thing done, it's not gonna happen. But the link is out there, he got to do this for thirty years, all from again. Alright, so I'm gonna be a part of the Magenesis Shor, if this is what we wanna do, I like that, but I see, okay, this is the Magenesis Shor, you all part of the Magenesis Shor. So let's, let's just keep on working, the brothers gotta ask them, plan about how they wanna please our community, how they wanna see part of our community. We got, we got a lot of work to do, we got, we got a lot of work to do, a lot of men, these brothers, these males again, and everything else, so, well, yeah, let's, let's just get this work done. And we invite all of y'all to come to the meeting, that's why they got the second part, they got the second meeting at seven o'clock, then at eight, eight-thirty, whatever, we open up to the general community. All of y'all should be there, cause they don't tell me, no, we can come three times out of three hundred and sixty-five days out of year. Just three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. We don't need y'all to come just three days, we need y'all to be on board. So let's get this thing done, man, try to stay around, we in top, uh, bless all, it's our life. And just my friend, I have one thing, sisters, y'all, I was invited, y'all is a good team, so I'm gonna, you just wanna play a bigger story.
And, and you know, if there are any questions for sisters, comments, corrections? You know, one of the things is that, I think, we talk a lot about, we talk sometimes about politics, we talk about money. But as Muslims in this body, in the Magenesis Shor, we don't wanna forget the spiritual component. And we know when we read about Benny Israel. And this, this doesn't mean be afraid of politics, it's, no, no, it all is important, but if we had to pick? We gotta go towards what's pleasing to Allah, somehow, if we had to pick, and that's the main thing. And so, we know when we read in the Quran about Benny Israel, we have to think of ourselves. They were the Muslims back then, Benny Israel. So when you read Benny Israel in the Quran, you gotta think, man, this is evil, like, this is, they don't believe it back then. And one of the things always speaks out to me is with Prophet Isa, Ali Isa. How the Benny Israel, it was part of, they wanted political power. Now, this seem, this mean shenanigans, but that's what they were fighting for. Isa, Isa, I'm here really for spiritual glory. Because once that happens, Allah, cause all this is in the dominion, all this is in the building of Allah's empire. If he wanna give you something, he'll give it to you. This, this, this is easy, this is not that complicated. We just have to put ourselves in a position, and we keep trying to do it, to have the favor of Allah, somehow. And so when you talk about violence, what, what the Magenesis gonna do about murder? What the Magenesis gonna do about this now? Again, these are serious concerns. So I just don't, I, I wanna mention that spiritual components, sometimes we get away from that, and it gets too materialistic, you know? So we have to be, we gotta treat our family well, we have to do all the basic things. So, brother Me, and then?
Asmaa wa alaikum. One of the things that we, that I do with the Muslim Jahidi, is that the sisters that I get in here do justice. Meaning, they don't have the right to appeal to the place, or they have a fault, and full hour. They don't get the justice, they don't get the husband, they don't get the right justice, even marriage. They need, they need their own bills, or, or their rent pay, we don't do that as a job. We do, Muslim Jahidi does, we need to pull off your wide squad. These monsters have monsters out of the rapid bacteria, but we need to stretch that, the sisters know, that they can go to the monster and get justice, and sure.
Asmaa wa alaikum. Thank you, Asmaa. Wa alaikum wa alaikum. Wa assalamualaikum wa assalamualaikum. Wa masalaikum wa as-salatu wa as-salatu. Sallallahu alaihi wa alaikum. Qarasulullah, Sayyidina Salam, Qarasulullah, Sayyidina Salam. Disa'naa, ma'ala, ta'udu ba'adah, khayyad alaikum illa, wa tukkab. Disa'naa, people did not go astray, that the guidance was a product until they brought about disputation. So knowing this, even though Master Alaa has given us guidance, brotherhood and sisterhood is the main component of Islam. And following, like you said, the spiritual connection to Islam, this is the key, but you have to have teachers that are pushing that, in general, so. So, once again, in the book of Khilafah, the Carolers of the Stars, the Prophet says, Man ta'akal ala araa, wa huwa sawi. Nana Allah, who have waited, he wants to die now. Who leaves the army while he is in the right, Allah will have built waiting for the house of the new owners. So the prophetic medicine, Prophet Sayyidina Salam, for the rule of us, is to use this medicine in our communities. So, in, the rule is the key, knowledge. Not what we think, or what we, you know, what we think we should do, but the prophetic knowledge, or the prophetic Sunnah of the Quran, this is the way for us to travel the path, inshallah. And one last study, this is a car, this is a boy, Sayyidina Salam. Man salat, ta'likum, yattum, fihi alman, sahla, Allah, who has taken the Jannah. Who travels the path seeking the knowledge, or all the extremely easy for the path, these prayers. So we, we look for, both the E and the Sunnah and the Quran, these are the answers. And a lot of times in our community, we shun the way for people from knowledge and knowledge. And we've done it by just, uh, what they call synopsis, I'm not gonna do analysis, it's gonna happen, it's not gonna work that well. So you have to go back to what the early Muslims did, they go to the Quran and the Sunnah for the answers. And I'm not saying that we're not, but that's inshallah, we have to teach our children, inshallah, towards the future. So I feel the one coming, the other one. Sir, brother.
Asmaa wa alaikum.
Wa alaikum wa alaikum.
I, I was saying that, um, it should be, um, more, more, uh, more, more meetings, uh. Uh, something like we used to do, uh, when I first started out, uh, in one of the Masjid, early times, the Tali, it's Tali. And this is more like a second to be like that, but it's, it should be like a lot more meetings, I think. In order to be more funny to the people and, and reach more people. And, and I think that would very effective, back in the day, probably you remember in your mind, the Tali was continuous. And has a lot of people, I think, benefit from it. So inshallah, maybe you can put that into the, uh, with the leadership, inshallah.
Absolutely. You know, uh, I wanna say, right before brother Me leaves, I mean, what you gotta do? But I, I said this story before, my first contact with, I think of my first contact that I remember, with the Magenesis Shor. I was twenty, uh, four, twenty-three, something like that. My wife was giving birth to our first child at Temple Hospital. So we in the room, and she says, uh, she needs something to call. Alright, so I go run to the car, we don't know, the crowd elevator, it was a sister, and she said, she has some kind of name tag, some kind of ID, I didn't really pay attention. And she said, I said, so how they? She said, why didn't you say I'm the daughter, you got to brother, alright, she said, I'm not leaving you. She said, uh, what, what are you here for? I said, my wife about to give birth to our first child, and I showed her on the left, she said, my, what's your wife's name? So I like, I told her her name, like, I mean, what, I don't know what, what's this one, what's going on with this, but I can, you know, I gave her, gave her information. She pulls out something, some kind of list, she's looking, she's saying, who are you again? I said, she said, I don't say nobody, you take it twice, who, who are? Who are? She said, well, my name is Sister Haneetha, she's working on behalf of Messenger Muhammad, and the Magenesis Shor, under brother Me's direction. So they go out and visit, this Islamic, he said, Moonshine, but also again, the Islamic Pastoral Care Committee. So he was dispatched, men, to visit men, women, to visit women. Every community has that problem, not problem, their issue, their thing, their reality. I don't care who you are, rich, poor, it doesn't matter, black, it doesn't matter, somebody's in the hospital for different reasons. So she just came up, saw my wife, and just asked if everything was okay, and that you, well, alright, everything was good. I said, you got me, man, you got me, man. So that's when I started attending meetings, under brother Me, and he'll send you out to different places. And I never forget, I told us before, he sent me to see one brother, I think it was Hospital, they try to send you to the area where you're originally born. And I get in there, the brother's asking a simple question, he starts thinking, oh, you guys for money, man, I ain't got no money, man. He said, how, can you pour water for me? I don't wanna ask about some money. Now, you can say, well, he can do table, alright, that ain't the point, I think. Is the point is that he just, is something is something, can you pour water for me? I don't know. And that was under, you know, brother Me's direction, under Magenesis Shor, under brother Me, I just wanted to definitely say that, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just have to say, uh, everything's been saved today, it's all due towards the mercy of the things that God has made for these success. You know, one of the things that I'm finding out is that, in the same building we're in right now, only thing is downstairs, sitting around, round table, square, everybody, to the whole way around, the whole cafeteria. And the Magenesis Shor of Brother Ali was established, it began. And, uh, the two largest communities at that time were, the full of the bastard, and large small communities. See, we had those who came from the leadership, I mean, you know, working Muhammad, that came from Major Muhammad, not Muhammad. Then you had those who came, stayed from the Sunnah, Orthodox and Allah. It was two largest communities. And Imam Master Rasheed, Prophet Alayhi, he was his man. And that day, he was, he was elected as the, uh, deputy mayor, I killed the support, was the, uh, like the mayor. The master selected the deputy mayor, and Imam Master Rasheed, Imam Sanjani Ali, who's man, this bastard. They actually came together as brothers, and basically, brothers saying, Tali, we count Tali that we had. They were real hard to bridge the hearts and love affair of brothers that had been eyes. And this was, this was, this was, this was, this is great enough, it was before. And I remember, Imam working Muhammad was coming to town, and Major Muhammad coming to town, everybody was saying, we were all going to say. But this time, he was coming, he said, no, we're gonna receive him as, we all Muslims. Not just Muslims, that's probably, I mean, we receiving him as a Muslim, that we stand as one of his brothers, a Muslim, he's because of the Muslims. And we had many Tali's, Magenesis Shor Day, Major Magenesis, they were real hard together, coming to all those Tali's. They understood process of what we came, and how, and where they came, and, you know, that's, that's, that's a verse from a lot of the pros like that, man, because there was one time inside the prison, that those communities, man, they were at the, they had to bring the bloodshed. I mean, real bloodshed. And by Allah's mercy, what did they do? They had group confrontation. Group confrontation brought them to a relationship that's still here today, this woman is there. And I'm glad, man, I'm glad, uh, brother Me does, he did it yet, because that's a part of what was there in there. But the other one that was there, because there was a, a real force, that was a strength for, I killed the support, a real strength of the devil, Imam Master Rasheed. That was a worker, brought everything he had to take, would make it work. I just like to say, he's not present today, and I don't want that to be remiss, and to think that, uh, we're not happy with the work he put in. And he's not been a full effort anymore, but anyway, the work he put in has made what we're sitting today, and continue to go forward. But, say, Chad, if you just give us some comments, please, we appreciate the work that you've done, the sacrifice you made, bringing us forward, and putting this together, and then helping clean the large. And, uh, inshallah, I would like to hear some comments from you, that you present for us.
Oh, so you got the mic, right? I said, let's just go first, yeah. I'm sorry.
Hi, um, I just wanted to make a comment, um, about, um, uh, we have a little, a lease issue about the Muslim Jahidi. Um, you may already, just in our minds, to get about training the next, so like, we just, I'm really, really, and it's really good, and you, I still agree. You know, sometimes, you know, something happens, it is, it's, it's something that happens, you have somebody ready to, to, you know, say, to, 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 to. Do we, you know, I'm talking about training the next, basically, so, so, yeah, like, it's like, it's really good, are we just having, just being trained? So, but after, it's not the, I, it's, it's like, you've been, you've been, that's really good, yeah, okay.
How can they find out, they, they, the, the, the Magenesis you have, can you post it on the Magenesis website?
Yes.
And then they can get it as a, as a thousand percent, I bet? So, so we have the, this is the situation.
Well, the first class, the Jamaican class, we have, we have seventeen, uh, February, but we can set up the next classes, uh, just, so, we, we set it up, the next classes. And we're very, we're available to teach these classes, we need all these, we request them, and this is what you're doing now. So we're ready to do the classes tomorrow, this is, or we, we ready, we ready for the college, and, and everything else, we need, the Jamaican class, we have a certification Jamaican class, at Muslim Jahidi, seventeen, Saturday, February, inshallah. My word?
Asmaa wa alaikum. I was going to, um, I was, I just wanted to, um, say that, as far as the sisters, we can't afford it, involved. Sometimes for sisters, and I've been in Muslim community, as a matter of fact, Jenee gave me, chat out of twenty-nine years ago. So, yeah, she gave me a chat.
For twenty-nine?
Oh, back to Miami, so, um, but sometimes, like, you know, you struggle, and you fall off, and you come back. And sometimes our, this woman isn't welcome, especially for sisters. It seems like a lot of times, sisters are there before, and clickish. So if you don't belong to, or come from a known family, or belong to, right, I guess, I'm. So if you don't belong to, or come from a known family, or belong to, right, I guess, a woman. It's very retarded, sister. I'm just an aggressive person, and I love the ball. So even when I show up or fall off, I always come back. And a hungry day, I always say, "Sujajinee," because I call them in the midnight hour for anything, for a question, concern, for a chit chat, whatever. But I'm understanding that it's not much either for sisters that's not in the mood. I've tried to give them community, I've always loved the sisters, and it seems like a lot of times, we get a lot of love, but we follow them. You know, from a kingdom thing. So I'm just saying this, like, today, I was like, oh, I need to get up, I got a black woman, alright. But I was like, you know what? I've been trying for like the last year to make sure I can merge myself more in my community. But I just feel like it's struggle when I talk to people that are new. In this, when I talk to people that have been Muslim, took Chiada, I said I was Muslim at first, but took Chiada years ago and like it fell off and came back, they're like, man, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think. But I'm treating. So if there's something that we can do for the sisters, that I think about with Sister Mila, Sister Brenda, Sister Akeem and Shabae, Sarah and I think, and they was tight, you all, so welcome. Sister Mila mightn't have seen me for a year, but I just pop up and get you smiling and welcoming and, you know, like, a tray. Everybody like who said this, they don't like, they don't want to stuff. But if we can love one another and we can teach our kids, that's why this is crazy, I believe. Everything in my word is saying, when I hear about somebody who can learn. And then there's a Muslim here and a Muslim. Right now, my son, now I have a, a dog, I have a dog son, and I have a rich children, and I have a teenage son. A hungry day, I'm blessed, I had my son's dead mother in trouble, going to jail, my mother's saying. And my thirteen-year-old, I stumbled upon a state parade, I don't know if you guys know, where a state parade is called out in the United States, playground. And all the brothers, and that, um, rec center, everyone, so much for me that before I knew it was a brother. Like, it just needs to be more, I think, and really be more welcoming for the sisters. And we shouldn't have to know somebody or come from a certain place to be welcomed in this school. It's supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to love each other for the love of the Lord, for the sake of the Lord. That's all I can say.
Do that. You know, right before Imam Shamsadeen say a few words. Can, uh, can you, can you quickly just say, exactly, can you, can you, the, uh, stuff, something, Shalawah? Right before Imam Shamsadeen, Shalawah?
Assalamualaikum.
Yes.
It's good to see everybody out here, um, without it. What this tells is that anybody that showed up today, uh, has true sincerity in the hospital. But I know what's going on with you, and we have a concern for you. But I'm a long time, always said that religion is sincerity. So if you don't have sincerity, then you haven't been. But that means, uh, I, uh, I think it's the very goal for the chair for the, uh, E Committee of the Magenist's Shore. The goal of the E Committee is to organize the festivals for the teens, right? To organize festivities for the teens. In organizing the E, there's a lot of work that goes on. I mean, you have to, you have to come up with whatever. You have to come up with activities, you have to plan food, any events, make sure you have security. So there's, there's a lot of little things that can be done in organizing the E. Now, everybody likes to eat cake, but not everybody likes to eat a cake. We need help from all these communities, especially the E Committee. We can always use hands. Uh, one of my shits, I say all the time, I say, they need hands, they might work. So we need one hand for all these communities. Now, the E Committee has a goal to organize at least four fundraisers a year. Besides soliciting donations for the E from individuals, from businesses, and different, uh, organizations. One of the four fundraisers a year. Right now, we currently have, uh, a fundraiser in which we are selling Baraka journals. And you might see the journals out in the hallway and take. These journals are produced by a company called, you know, Productive Muslim. And it is to help incorporate all of your daily living to make you more productive and to remove a loss of knowledge in everything that we do. To help make you like more productive as a Muslim and as, just as an individual. So you might want to check it out, really, we've, uh, shown some information on it. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, so the journal costs, uh, oh, twenty-nine ninety-nine, so thirty dollars, right? Uh, you can go out and take a sneak, a peek at the journals. And all proceeds go towards the joint E. And that's another, and we've been working on this unity, the Muslim, time to hold the joint E. And somehow, it's, it's, it's been somewhat of a struggle getting everybody to participate. But, uh, Shalawah, we'll get there, we'll get there, we'll get there. But we need your help, we need your help from all these communities. Now, if you heard anything today that interests you, or any community that you think you might, you know, you might live with, please contact the Magenist's Shore. Our contact information is on the sheets that you have, right? So with, with that being said, uh, I want to invite you to join at least the E Committee of the Magenist's Shore. Okay, everyone can, but, listen. In this community as Muslims, everybody's a Muslim lover, right? Everybody's a Muslim lover. It doesn't matter if, you know, if, if you like a giant, now, for your Ushar, it doesn't matter. We need your sincerity. That is just wanna help bond Muslims for sincerity. So please, please step up, we, join all these communities, Shalawah. Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salam.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Listening up, I'm very, very disturbed, uh, uh, I want to make just a few, I have no kind of time to make a request to. But now, uh, for these breakfasts to, uh, I'm not asking myself a place to do it. I first met Imam Asim, I think it was nineteen seventy-one, at the, um, Eastern State Prison. Where they had placed the youth there, that was seemingly to them, or to them, might just be someone who's experienced regarding the neighbors or whatever. As I met Imam Asim. Prior to that, my, my army was in trying to entail the kind of, uh, youth, thousands and tens of itself, right in the army, grew from six straight. And then, then, you, young people at that time, and Imam Asim, you know, and then, and everybody else in the community. And when I met Imam Asim, he was in the border, street gang, he was stolen. And we were having difficulties there in that prison on the same tier, block, hall, that was a lot. And, uh, I went down and talked to him, and he was a little kid. Imam Asim, I heard, I basically, he was called Little Wilbur. And we had a conversation about the disagreements he had, you know, hostile, just among us. Basically, that, we were friends, both, we were just friends. And I saw him in the house and again, earnest desire to see these, uh, things, these art that was seen with discrepancies and that, probably in any way. He was trying to see a little difference. Islam was not a questionable discussion at the time, though I was in, at the time. Now, through that experience, it's been a long, few years, I love you people. The one thing that I, I heard happened, my, my feeling, my spirit, was that I always tried to make every effort to make sure that I was never speaking and talking and acting in any way that would constitute two different groups, two different communities. I never did it. I was in the Naisi, but I knew that as a people, you could not allow yourselves to be divided on the basis of anything you assume or guessing. And the members, our own, that's how we were, you know, the consensus. They understood that, couldn't leave me there. And as we went through that whole process, I met Imam Abdullah Ziz, was right here for David's meeting, was stood up there, I met him. And many others, should have built a Dula, who's better, was very close to, to talk on the community every day. Never allowed ourselves to go toward a thought that would differ, that we should be heartless, that focused on things that was best in the spirit of God's people. So I'm saying this to you, racism is a father of race. Racism not a father of racism, racism is a father of race. There's no such terminology, in fact, if you look back a few years, and if you're to disappoint police people, you'll find the term race was never relative to anything at all. And so the amount of uses are to take, create a division on people. So when we look at, really, on now, we don't have to have, should not have a station about the decision to receive a child as a father. Or that's not gonna be a solution for the whole humanity in this new society, which has to be our concern, the Quran. No words will be before his, and no words will be done with anything of good reality at the festival. We can look at everyone, the way that's gonna be always true. So we're gonna find ourselves wrong within those marks. Now, as people, we have many problems because we are not able to have a part in narratives that do, uh, filter into a governance environment, and we've been the subject of narratives that they be unknowing and uninvolved in ourselves. So if we come together, we know that we really, of people who have all the attention in the world, are becoming something unique. Because they've been excluded, we didn't understand, we're excluded, not be embarrassed and angry and emotionally civil about things. Just you can have it, they're positive, they're positive, anyway, as mentioned, every time, we said, we do consultation, we sell with each other. Didn't know how each other think. Don't be in a position where you're trying to jump over each other. I wanna say something that's supposed to want, what someone said before. No, I want to join those people before. And you work with them, work with them, and soon, the idea of unity is assumed, given us some clarity. It dawned on my mind. And then all the things we talk about, our sisters, our children, let me think of, a lot of tables of all that agony and the disgusting, fine world that they related to that, was, is it white? But that's what we have. I'm not gonna talk much longer than that. Maybe one day we can go within the historical references of what we experienced, what we've seen, what we've witnessed, maybe we helped up with the condition that we have to consider. That the circumstances, the conditions that we are in to meet by virtue of fact, that we're those who were brought to this country by our forefathers and champions and the whole ships. Now, I know that's not much of a conversation, even when you're getting closer, once we came there, all that, I was going through all that. But who had to throw us in ships as the ones that generated the narrative? Nah. And the point of this is, for us to understand, if I was a citizen, if it brought me a change in the whole ship, one day, my conscience will tell me, I obviously did not want to come. And if I didn't want to come, I must have considered how it goes ahead. If I done more than that, the narrative would inform the key, we should sit and dig in my mind.
Shubram.
I'm gonna stop right there.
No, there you go.
I must say, brother, brother, thank you brother, in Shalawat, for the prayers, and for the belief, for the stick, for all they lay here, for our nation. I will talk to her, talk to her, talk to her, talk to her, back, uh, see the sisters, do the, that, and, and, so, uh, uh.
Shubrah. Waalaikumsalam. Shubrah, brother. I'm gonna, so now, uh, we have to close out, we really do. Because one of the things, I'll introduce Brother Rafi real quick, but one of the things I'll say real quick, as Muslims, we have to be very, very serious with the times now. When we ask people to come, we got to make sure, I, not, not, of course, we're going to Shamsa Dean, but I'm saying us, Majesties, put this on, I get a little stickler about this. And so, because, of course, we're told, uh, that's not, uh, uh, so, 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 sometimes, they may have something else, I don't know, I just want to stick to it, but, Brother Rafi, uh, uh, Diya, uh, Greed is the head of, the chairman of the Economic Development Committee. He has a lot of information on the mission development plan, uh, for self-funding within our community. You can see it all on, on his website, for the majesties dot com, for the majesties dot com, go to the economic development page. It's in the PDF file, it's only, what, two pages in that? One page, one page, so it's not that much. It's a very serious, he has some credentials, like building and developing, and so, um, just. All right, I'm gonna do that.
See, we, 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 we engaged, uh, uh, I said, the moderator, because in all our meetings, we were ready to call, and he was saying to you all, that, uh, the practice is going to be there, it'll be twelve to two, so we got one moment before two o'clock, so he gonna make sure we got a lot to, so we back along, back out. We'll be spacing, in Shalawat.
I'm gonna do that. So don't forget, out there, the books, Barakah books, that the E Committee is selling.
Oh. I will, we will, we will, we will, we will, you may have used.
You may have used for Shalawat, or just a minute in Shalawat. So don't forget that, in Shalawat, so, you may have used.
Assalamualaikum. I hope to be loud, brothers and sisters, really, for your participation in coming out here today. Uh, we in Majesties, we are always striving to bring people together and to look at each other as equals and be of our support. The job for us as Muslims is to keep struggling, keep striving to be together. Somebody mentioned earlier, the verse in Quran, uh, what, what testable, I think that you made, whole, whole facts to the rule of Allah altogether. A lot of some of us, uh, is encouraging us to always stay together, to keep showing up. Whenever you have elders, whenever you have youth, these are the kind of things that we're supposed to be at. Juma prayer every Friday, with the elders, with the Hoonla, with the scholars come to town, I'm looking up. We got brothers amongst us, who've been in this struggle for a long time, who understand the need, who have, uh, expert, uh, knowledge and information that all of us can benefit from. And it's only when we make the initiative to come together, not to separate, not to stay back, or come forward. The Quran say, the one who strives is better than the one who sits at home. So whenever you hear, uh, Majesties Shalawat, whenever you hear, uh, Juma Friday, whenever you hear some, uh, elders, or some scholars are in town, we gonna get the message, always come and get yourself involved, because this is going to be, uh, help to yourself personally, your family, and the entire community. So I just want to thank everybody for showing up. Some of us could be around a lot, as a young man, I used to be in this message, and back then, in my twenties, this message used to be full. We can do it again. Uh, I watched, I seen that Shamsa Dean, when I was a young man, I watched him reaching out to different men, trying to bring brothers together, I watched when they formed the Majesties Shalawat. This is work that we all have been off the net. We all have to be able to see, you gotta stick together, you gotta work community, you can't let jealousy, envy, the little, small things to get people, don't let that stuff divide you, don't let that stuff hold you back, come forward. Make the effort to be together, this is what that was all about. Um, the prophet Muhammad, he spoke to everyone, and he reached out to everyone. So as the tower put it back, we do give courage, uh, equals, we are all equals. Nobody got, no little news, that's how I meant to describe it. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikumsalam. So again, we appreciate everybody, as the young, all, everything, as you said, we really appreciate everybody. Of course, another message, we have posted, Brother Alman, for doing this work, recording this, I hope you may have been posted, when I remember Shalawat, David Husein. Um, all the security, for the Mala, head of that, for the Jabar, for the Husein, all, all the brothers involved, the sisters, and every cousin, I ain't shit. You know, my son Jalal, everybody, of course, the mans would come here, the committee heads would come here, definitely want to appreciate everybody. Last thing, in Shalawat, before we get brothers, the act, the service, the act, closes out, is, this is a little off script. I think we should give something, whatever you can, to fill up your message. We had the stuff with the, with the messages, Shalawat, the cash app is on the, the forms, the papers and stuff, but whatever you can, a dollar, maybe a love, not meaning a love, a blessing. So whatever you can, I don't worry, good, or just put it back on the floor, and then you go get the sign, or that shit, so. But I'm taking, I'm taking, I'm taking. Yeah, so we got to, just, just try to do something, in Shalawat, and so, it says, the act, equals, Shalawat. Hell, the next year, congratulations to that, that shit, Muhammad, February fourth, on the eighth thirty, in Shalawat, of course, on, uh, seven, or a month, or a week, or a week.
Allah has been a fine athlete, God has been a fine athlete, Allah has been a fine athlete, Allah has been a fine athlete. Allah has been a fine athlete, Allah has been a fine athlete, Allah has been a fine athlete. Allah has washed the khalibat, Allah has washed the khalibat, Allah has washed the khalibat, Allah has washed the khalibat. Allah has washed the khalibat, Allah has washed the khalibat, Allah has washed the khalibat. Allah has washed the khalibat, and Allah has washed the khalibat. Sallallahu alaihi wa sallam, wa ala ali wa sahbi wa salam. Subhanallah, wa rahmatullah, wa shaddahallah, wa ala ali wa ala hati. Nasrulullah, wa rahmatullah, wa shaddahallah, wa ala ali wa ala hati. Wa shaddahallah, wa ala ali wa ala hati. Wa shaddahallah, wa ala ali wa ala hati.
Check it! Check it! Check it! Check it! Check it! Check it! Surveys. Yeah, the surveys, yes, she's collecting the sisters, so.
Yeah, collecting the girls.
Again, you drop the note, donation right on the table, for administrators, for that shit. Again, you drop.